I'd like to welcome you to the school board meeting tonight. We're going to start off our meeting recognizing some people. And the first recognition that we have, am I turning it over to Erica? Are you doing it? Okay. Our first recognition is Brian McDowell, who's a Presidential Award winner. And Erica, open line, we'll discuss how awesome he is.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? So, the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching was established by Congress in 1983. And it is the highest honor bestowed by the United States government specifically for K through 12 teaching in science, technology, engineering, math, and computer science. So Highlands High School STEM teacher, Mr. Brian McDowell, has been awarded, is awarded as one of only two teachers in the state of Kentucky to receive this award this year. Each winner of this prestigious award receives a certificate signed by the President of the United States, in addition to $10,000 and a inexpensive paid trip to Washington DC, which I believe unfortunately this year was relegated to a virtual option. I know, heartbreaking, but regardless, on behalf of the White House, the Presidential Award recognizes, I cannot step in on this. But basically, it recognizes those teachers who have deep knowledge of content and the ability to really engage students in a meaningful way with STEM. And so, you know, it truly demonstrates the positive impact of the excellent teachers in and around the entire United States, but specifically here in Fort Thomas. And I just think that I could not be more proud of him for all that he's accomplished. So congratulations, Mr. McDowell.
Here, Brian's going to come out and present a clap to you. But I want to congratulate you. After you got this, I went and read all about it. Very, very cool. So I feel honored.
It is. Thank you.
Thanks.
And I just have one more question. I do believe that there's a lot of science educator talent in our school district and that I should not be the only Presidential Award winner. So as we start pushing our teachers to go for these national awards, just let them know we're happy to help them out and also move them along.
That's awesome, Rosie. And then the other thing is 58 figures for your job in Washington. You can go with that.
Yes, your mom knows what's on the block.
To Brian, we couldn't be more proud. This is one of the greatest recognitions that we can receive in this field. And having fantastic STEM teachers is effective. We know will connect our kids to doing great things. So we're going to present to you on behalf of the Department of Education a Tradition of Excellence Award and a current year.
All right, next I would like to invite Mara Everly and Colleen Dufferson to come forward for the State Conservation Writing Award winner. This is so exciting. So, the Jim Chapel Art and Conservation Writing Contest. It's been around since 1974. And it starts to educate our students on soil, water, forestry, and wildlife conservation. They take that knowledge and they do their artwork or essays for the high school. And they can get monetary prizes for being county winner and regional and state winners. And this year, we have a Kentucky state winner for this writing contest. And it is Mara Everly. And she would like to read her essay right now. I'm just kidding. She chose, I didn't freak out. So I just wanted to commend her because this is not something that I assign my students, make them do, or anything like that. I just offered an opportunity and Mara took it and she went with it and she got it. So she is going to be recognized on April 21st by the Conservation District and she will receive her own present. So we have a state writing winner. Awesome. Congratulations, Mrs. Dufforth is going to walk out. And she's got a certificate for you and then a t-shirt as well. Anybody have any questions or comments?
All right, Mara, what was the, obviously was related to forestry conservation, but could you tell us kind of the general theme or topic that you focused in on?
Yes, this year was about water conservation. And it was all just like, you were conserving water in ourselves.
And you've lived abroad at the same extent. So that's probably a very common.
Yeah, I actually, yeah. That's cool.
And I think I've turned her on here because now she's on the environmental side. So we're going to really talk about the environmental side.
Well, I want to know how you have assigned and the writing.
It might be hard to do.
I'm not reliable. Your student's a bad.
But it's all right.
Well, congratulations. Okay, the next section, we are going to recognize Tradition of Excellence Awards. I'm going to turn this over to you.
Yes, our Tradition of Excellence Award is an opportunity for our community, our teachers, our students, board members, administrators to recognize those who are putting our mission and vision in our district, who really represent that idea that we are rich in tradition and focused on the future. And so we have a couple to recognize, a couple nominees to recognize. And I just have fantastic people. And at least the first in my tenure, we have a student that requested a nominee. And so I'm going to ask Anousi Sery.
Hello, my name is Anousi Sery and I'm a junior at AHS. I would love to nominate Mr. Matthew Ewald for the Tradition of Excellence Award. Mr. Ewald has helped me and many other students become so excited about biology and has led me to think about a career in the field. He's always thinking of new ways to explain things, to make hard concepts easy for students to understand. He works so hard every day to make sure that he and his students are on the same page. He makes everything so amazing for me and for other students. And there's not one day that I'm not excited to come into his class. And I've always thought something that even haven't had two years now. Any question I have, he's willing to answer, whether it's about the content or learning in class, or about my future, such as what he recommends is that I start to learn towards my future in college. Not only that, Mr. Ewald cares about who I am and asks me questions about how my day was or how I'm doing every day and starts my day off right when I walk in the hallway and he says hello to me. He cares about getting to know me as a person, not just as a student. He's helped me become a better student, a person, and I would love him to be recognized for all his stuff. For me and AHS, he has fired us by this award.
Congratulations, thank you.
We also have another Tradition of Excellence Award. We have actually two candidates here. These Tradition of Excellence Awards were nominated by Ms. Kristy Daly. So is Kristy here?
I nominated Mrs. Vanderpool and Mrs. Howard for the Tradition of Excellence Award because they are empathetic collaborators and they have helped my daughter to become a courageous leader. These two teachers coached the middle and high school forensics teams. And they have held practices twice a week from September to March to prepare the team for virtual and in-person competitions. They have organized volunteer judges or they have judge competitions themselves. So I'd like to share some of the results from the state competitions. The state middle school competition, we had eight students. There were seven entries out of 263 in the state. And our team came in sixth overall. And then for the state high school competition, we had two students, four entries out of 471, and they were 12th overall at state, which was just incredible. So our teams are, they might be small, but they are very talented and very mighty. And I got the opportunity to go to the middle school state competition and it was, it was just amazing to see the way the students supported one another throughout the whole weekend. And I think that's a testament to these two coaches. So separately, I'd like to share a little bit more personal of a story that illustrates how these two teachers embody the ideals of excellence. And apologize if I get a little emotional, but my daughter, prior to the start of this school year, she's new, she's a seventh grader. She has not been in the Highlands District before. And the year before, we had a lot of change in our lives. We moved several times. There were some, aside from the pandemic, several things that happened. So a lot of ups and downs for her. It was very challenging for her to start the new school year. She didn't want to do anything. She did not want to participate in anything. I forced her hand a little bit and told her she was required to do at least one school activity. By the time she got her button here, there was nothing else left for her. So she kind of got into it by default. And I knew what it was, but she didn't. And we went to the first meeting and I, she tried out and they said, you're on the team. And she said, I don't really want to do this, Mom. And I said, sorry, they said you passed your tryout and also I paid the fee. So and then we'll talk and you can pick out something else. So it was a struggle from day one. Every single practice was hard. Every, the first few weeks, every morning, she was freaking out in the car knowing that she had to go to forensics after school. When the first competition came, like I didn't think I would get her to school that day. She was just a hot mess. And so the end of the first competition, and it was virtual even. All she had to do was be videotaped in the classroom. So, but she got in the car and she was actually all smiles after that. And you could see like a little confidence building. And throughout the year though, every competition that came up, she was just, she still just didn't want to do it. And I said, that's fine, we just got to make it through the one year. So we got to regionals then and it was the first in-person competition. I did not think we would get there. She was just a hot mess in the morning. So once we arrived at the regional tournament, the coaches did an awesome job of just warming up the students, calming them down. There was a separate space for the team. The teammates were all very encouraging. And Meg went in there and she presented. And it's the first time I've seen her do it all in one. And she did great. I could tell she was nervous, but she did great. She had to present again an hour later and she got second in regionals, which was amazing to me. And it was like she came alive after that weekend. In the state competition, she went down and just killed it. And she finished top 12 in the state. So to see that in her was amazing for me as a mom. On the way home, she started talking about all of her friends that she was going to recruit for next year because she has decided that forensics people are her people and this is her thing. So it has meant a lot to me. And it's all because of these two and what they have fostered in this team. And to see the camaraderie between all of the kids and what they have built and then like the results that they have, it's been really amazing. And I cannot thank you both enough for what you brought out in this year. She is even like, today, my child, who has, she was almost failing in the second quarter. She was not turning in anything. She got all of her third quarter work turned in. And today, without me asking, she came in and started her homework by herself. So I mean, this child is completely different in the last month. And it is a lot of it is thanks to these two, so.
Very cool.
Thank you. I get to keep this?
Yes, you do.
Alyssa said she wanted to bang the dab, like.
I'm really.
No. Yes, she can. Thank you. The next section of our meeting is Board Bravos and Updates. And so if anybody has something that they want to talk about or congratulate or whatever, we'll use this time to do that. So who wants to go first?
Senior member?
Yeah, the senior member. The senior member?
I kept it quiet.
Yeah, I'll go first, yeah. I'd like to recognize one of our own, Jamie Walls Ritchie, who achieved yet again, something for the record books. But I think what's important when you speak of Jamie is to remember her incredible basketball career here at Highlands and at the college level. She set many records statewide. She set national records. She was the leading scorer in the state of Kentucky for many, many years. She has now achieved 400 wins as a girls' college basketball coach. And it's been only been 40 coaches to do that in the history of Kentucky and only six in Northern Kentucky. So it's a tremendous achievement for her and I'd like to recognize her for that.
That's awesome.
That's great.
She's not here, but we'll clap for her.
So I just wanted to give an update on the Highlands Musical. So if you're not aware, Highlands High School Musical starts this Thursday. Crazy for you. My freshman daughter, who doesn't give me a whole lot of excitement when she describes this, said it was one of the best musicals, one of the best plays she's seen up there. I hear there's lots of wigs, lots of dancing. So if you don't have tickets for that, that starts this Thursday. I think it runs Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
I'd like to recognize Highlands Indoor Track Team. They won state since our last meeting. It is an independent event run by the KTCCCA, which is the Kentucky Track Cross Country Coaches Association. Awesome. Well, I want to mention, we had honored our National Merit Semi-Final List back in October. And so during that time, the semi-finalists take, they have to send in an application and it's on grade point average activities they do and that sort of thing. So our two semi-finalists became finalists. So Katie Wilson and Logan Walsh are National Merit Finalists. So I want to talk about that. And then the other thing I wanted to talk about is this week, we had the Fort Thomas Education Foundation doing the Prize Patrol. I don't know if any of you saw some of the videos on Facebook, but gave well over $100,000. I think there were 18 different awards. So I always talk about the foundation being the dare to dream, you know. Write out something that you dream, that you dream about. And so it was very cool. We got to walk around and give a lot of those. So that was great.
All right, wanted to give a shout out to Highlands Dance Program. As far as state awards, the Kentucky Dance Coach Organization, KDCO, is the state competition or one of the state competitions. varsity squad got first in Palm and Hip-Hop as well as Grand Champion. And thanks to Coach Sam and Coach Corinne. JV got first in Hip-Hop and Palm. And thank you to Coach Hannah. And middle school got state runner-up in Hip-Hop and Palm. And thanks to Coach Megan for that. So their season has come to a close. And then want to say congratulations. We have faculty and students who will be recognized at Northern Kentucky's Education Council Excellence in Education Celebration at large regional awards program. So super cool for them. We have Golden Apple recipients, Jennifer Flynn from Johnson Elementary and Lauren Noah from Ruth Moyer. And then we have extraordinary service winner from Highlands High School, Guy Ponzer. And what's really, really cool is we have a number of students. Academic All-Star, Case Creo from the high school. Against All Odds, Dakota Summer. Career and Technical All-Star, Ashley Coulter. And student leadership with Macy Cooker. So those individuals are also going to be recognized by the district at the NESTEs. Plug for the NESTEs, which are going to be an awards where we'll celebrate students, teachers, and just all the awesome things that are going on. In Fort Thomas, that's April 14th at the Mess Hall. And tickets are available for $25. And the money is for the education foundation. So there's great grants that Ann mentioned. They would help fund that and other student projects and initiatives.
And the only other brags that I have is at Woodville Elementary last week, we had a Community Learning Day. It was a fantastic event that invited people throughout the region to come and learn from our students. Opportunities for student-led growth opportunities from all over the region. I thought that was pretty exciting. We have a blood drive tomorrow at Highlands High School. You want to come out and give some blood? It's a good chance to, I don't know if there's still openings there. And just to emphasize once again, the NESTEs event on the 14th, we'll have our Teachers of the Year will be recognized. So Gene Becker, Melissa Trimbach, and Cindy Graves will be recognized as Teacher of the Year. And we will also be recognizing Lori Reinhardt and Jeremy Hall as outstanding support staff. So we very much encourage everyone to come out. And just the start of this meeting and reflecting on excellence from our teachers, words that come around our sponsors and extracurricular events, students recognizing their teachers, national award winners. This is what Fort Thomas is about. And so proud to be, to be part of it and the different programming impacts that it has on our kids. So anyway, it's a great way to start.
Good. All right, the next is the Student Showcase. So I'd like to invite Stephanie Griffith. And if you'd bring up your kids, you're going to introduce them?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so I am here to share with you guys about this program that we do at the middle school. We've done it for a number of years. And as I'm sitting here over there watching, I am looking around and seeing some of my former students and colleagues and administrators who have worked with me in the past on this. And I just think it has been years in the making to get to where it is now. And I feel like this year was one of the best years we had for it. So this is something that we do in the middle of winter when there's nothing going on and everybody sort of is like, oh, you know, there's a little bit of the doldrums. But you know, thinking of state testing and everything, a couple of years ago, we thought, you know, reading makes a big difference. How much the students read and it's hard to motivate the middle schoolers to read. And beyond that, it is. So we came up with this winter reading challenge. And the gist of it is truly is that we just encourage the kids to do what they can, to set a goal for what they think that they can do. And then we offered different prizes for different grade levels. So I'm hoping this works. This is a video that some of my broadcasting kids made to introduce the winter reading challenge. And I think it's a little.
Yeah?
I think so.
Is it winter?
Yeah? Are you ready for a challenge?
Yeah. The winter reading challenge is for you. Come on, let's go. Three. Three, two, one.
The winter reading challenge is a community-wide competition to see who can read the most books.
It runs from February 1st to March 4th.
Parents and teachers can participate too. Each book they read counts for two.
Here are some of the prizes you can win for your reading.
If you read four books, you get a treat. If you read eight books, you get a free ice cream treat from the cafeteria. 16 books and you get a gift card. And if you read over 25 books, you get a surprise.
You can also win class rewards. Class rewards will be totaled up in your first period class. And the winning first period in each grade will win a donut party. The grade level that reads the most books will get a surprise. To submit a book, you will have to fill out a form found in the HMS Library School G page. You will have to answer basic information about your book along with answering two questions of your choice. Have a great rest of the day and get reading, Bluebirds.
So that was how I introduced it to all the kids. I watched that video. Write books sometimes. But they did a really nice job and introduced to the students and I sent it to the parents too, exactly what the challenge was about. And the way I talked to the kids is I said, you know, this is one time where we as teachers are not saying, you've got to do this. But I said, we're joining in too. And you know, for me, I set the challenge for myself. I'm not, I'm going to talk about some of these kids. I cannot read as much as them. But I set a goal for myself and I told the kids, I said, it's okay. I said, you do what you can. And I said, that's part of the challenge. But really challenge yourself to do something you haven't done before. So and then for the challenge, we said that the kids needed to, for the books, it needed to be at least 80 pages. And any book that was 400 pages or more would count as double. So and then for the parents, every book that they read counted for two. So that definitely helped. And so these are the individual rewards that, you know, were mentioned in the video. So we had numerous students meet the four books reward. And during this time, I get a lot of School G messages from kids. They'll be like, how many books have I read? Can you tell me? And you know, kids, I'm telling you, some that I never thought would read, like one little videotape message me and he goes, I've read five books. And I'm like, that's really good because I know him. And he goes, well, when there's a reward attached to it, I can do it.
Work on that entrance.
That's right, that's right.
I know. It was a little bad, but you know, it worked. And then we did have 16, for the kids who read 16 and over, there were 20 students in the middle school who did that, which I think is fabulous. And we had seven, and I will talk about them. We read 25 or more, which that's amazing in five weeks. Amazing. So and then as they mentioned in the video, so the first period class that reads the notes, they give a donut party and they really enjoy this. I go to Ledlow IGA, the Riverside IGA, it used to be One Date. They get those tiger tails. Everybody enjoys this. And then the party or the reward for the grade level that read the most is going to be a party on the football field. So we're working on that. That's going to be coming in April, once it gets a little bit warmer. And then we had a sixth grade teacher who did this, Mrs. Catchman. And I believe Miss Brewer did it too across sixth grade. But the kids designed bookmarks of the books that they read and they hung them on the locker. So that was like a visual representation for those kids. Something for other kids to see that may have motivated them to read more. But that was, I thought that that really was a very cool idea. Then we culminated this five-week reading challenge. March 2nd, I believe, is Read Across America Day. But that week is Read Across America Week. And on that Friday, we did a school-wide reading of the book Ghost. So it took like 25 to 30 minutes in every class period. I had different teachers because I went and sort of sampled out like, what is it going to feel like to try and read 18 pages when you're not maybe trying to discipline somebody or keep somebody on task? And I was like, oh my gosh, I was really thirsty. So I thought, you know, we probably need some people to record. So Ms. Oppenheim, Mr. Burgess, Mr. Shadwell, numerous teachers helped out for all the class periods. And so our teachers had the option, they could read the book to their students or they could play the audio. And I remember then the kids had never done anything like this before. And the kids were, that I would talk to, they're like, oh, I don't know what this is going to be like. But then by the end of the day, they really had fun. And I sort of snuck around and would walk through the halls. walk through the halls. I will say, I sort of had chills because it was really neat to walk around and see the kids engaged and listening. And by the end of the day, everybody had a book that they finished. So every student got at least one book. So it was really, that was really a neat activity and some of my teachers who don't read a lot, they were already coming to me the next day, I've got an idea for a book for next year. So it was great to see that enthusiasm around reading when everything is so digital nowadays. So for the classes, in sixth grade, we had four classes that read over 200 books. And now granted, we're saying 200 books, they're getting doubled and so on. So Ms. Riddengers' class, this is combined with parent totals too and whatever she read, but 341 books. That's like, wow. And then Trimbach was 332 and Heple was 241 and Ketchman had 201. But needless to say with those numbers, you can sort of tell which grade levels want to win. So that was really impressive. And seventh grade, they were in their encore classes and they probably didn't do as well as they usually do because they, my core teachers get pretty competitive. But, so I did theirs books per student to average it out. So in each of these classes, students were reading about 4.79 and so on. So that was Alessandra was the first, Herschel was second, and Rollum was third. And then eighth grade, difference of one book here between Bry and Harnish. And Mr. Harnish, I must say something because one of his students is here and Lilian Foley, she set up a challenge with him to see which of those two could read the most books. So I really feel like she as a student pushed him to read a lot and he will say that. And I let them sort of talk amongst themselves to determine the winner. And Mr. Warford's class had 111 books. So there were a lot of good things that happened beyond these numbers. I mean, the stories that I heard, you know, it really worked really hard. So here are my results. The sixth graders, 1,873 books. Eighth grade, 910. I mean, for eighth graders, amazing. I'll take that any day. And seventh grade too, 746. It was just phenomenal. And then as a community with the students, parents and teachers, 3,536 books in approximately five weeks. I mean, it was, it really was amazing and just, this was, I, it's one of my, I love technology, but I really do like reading and getting to promote this and the kids were excited. So it was just a great opportunity. So now I believe I have some of my top readers here. So these are the seven who read more than 25 or more in five weeks. You all can do the math on that. It's a lot. So Ian Darnell, believe you're here, come on up. He read 42. That, amazing. And I'm pleased, no, I'll have the T-shirt. Okay, yes. So come on up, Ian, your kid's here, yes. And then Iris Loyal, she is not here, 27 books. Lorelei Sanders, 25. Macy Davis, who is here, she read 27. Sophie Taylor, 46. I don't know how they do some of these. Lilian Foley is back here and she was the one who challenged Mr. Harnish. And so, I mean, her total is 33. I think his total might have been 60. It felt like it's all depends on how you, 40. 40, okay, she's got it.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm going to work this out. So I let them discuss that one. And then last but not least is Tanumi Abissini and she read 25. So I just, congratulations to all of them. We have another award coming for them at the school level, but they did fantastic and led their classes. I believe you were Ms. Riddengers, right? Sixth grade on that same team that did so well. Who do you have first? You have a really good, well, that's probably not.
Yeah, there you go.
There we go. So just a great job and, you know, just, it was a great year for this. We didn't do it last year, but I believe like the staff that's behind it, the kids seem to enjoy it, even though I'll have different, some different students, Lilian will be there with us next year, we're going to do it again. So it was a great opportunity. Thanks for letting me share. Hope I wasn't too wrong with it. So thank you.
You had a question?
Well, I was just going to say, I feel a little personally responsible for Harnish not winning because I could have read one more book. I did enter four. So sorry, Lilian, that I let you guys down. Could have, could have helped out more. But you helped out a ton and all you guys did. And that, that's so awesome in this day and age, you know, to still get a book out and turn the pages. So, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Anybody else have any questions? Congratulations. All right. Okay, the next section of our board meeting is Community Forum. So the Community Forum portion of the meeting of the Board of Education is an opportunity, you want all the people? Yeah. Let me let people, once they leave, that's fine. No, you're good. No, you're good. I know, everybody's so busy running places. Thank you. They had books to read.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. I know. The Community, the Community Forum portion of the meeting of the Board of Education is an opportunity for members of the community to informally address the board about a variety of topics, including issues for future consideration. Since the topics raised may not be issues listed and advertised on the public agenda, the Community Forum is not intended to be a setting for dialogue with the, with the board. Direct questions may be referred to the appropriate district personnel for future response. Answered briefly if a matter of procedure or tabled as they may be a future agenda item. Speakers who've registered at the reception area are asked to identify themselves and state their reason for addressing the board. Please address the school board as a whole through the chairperson rather than the individual members. And also just keep in mind that we don't want to talk about specific students, employee or community members cannot be discussed in the open meeting. So we'd like to keep this around two minutes if possible and it looks like we have, I don't know, three or four speakers tonight. Okay? So the first one is Rob Pinkston.
So I had asked actually Rob to come tonight and give an update on our wrestling program. There's been some good news lately. They just finished their season. Rob was, Rob was here a couple of years ago asking for a wrestling program. So I said, hey, after you're done, why don't you come to a board meeting and just give us an update on how it's been going?
I wanted to be in that other section that was like congratulations. I feel like, I want to praise you all for making just a fantastic decision on adding wrestling programs at Fort Thomas. You all know it's near and dear to my heart, but we've hit some fantastic growth. I don't want to take a minute to talk about that. I think anymore in two minutes. Not only has the wrestling program been great for boys, it's also been fantastic for girls too. I don't know if anybody knows this, but we had six women wrestle on the wrestling team, wrestling with boys this last season. And four of those women chose to go to the girls state competition. Of the four, three actually placed at state. This is their first year wrestling. And while I'm standing here, I want to take a minute and bring John Azar, Coach Azar, up here with me. Because I really should do that. I don't think anybody sees that opportunity we had formally. This is your first state coach at the wrestling program. Girls are great, bro. They're easier to coach.
Hey, Rob, come close to the mic there.
So I just wanted to let you know that not only have we had a tremendous amount of interest, we had, I think, at the high level, maybe 26, 27 kids on the roster at the high school level. Of that 26 and 27, I would say about half had never competed in any, in any, we had five guys. And we normally have, you know, your typical autumn athletes that want to wrestle like football players or, you know, somebody that's basketball a little bit more than an aggressive sport. We had dancers that came to compete. We had diabetics. We had kids that were in trouble with the ball, multiple kids. And it brought them out of the depths of a bad situation into a very, very prestigious healthy feeling. We had kids that have never competed in any sport before that qualified for semi-state. We had four kids qualify for semi-state this year. We had one kid actually made it to state and he placed seventh. Well, for, yes, last year. So what, what am I?
Wrestling was hard during the pandemic.
It really was. Well, not only, not only your typical, not about things, but also facilities, which brings me to my next thing. I know, years ago, I went to Brian and I said, hey Brian, what do you mean if you start this program? And he said, go find out what the interest is. I can tell you in the last seven years, we've had tremendous, not only community interest but community support. But one of the things that I've been asking for is please consider the facilities for the club program. The club program is what grows into the high school program. And. Where the money?
How much is the size on it currently? The clubs or the younger students? How big is that?
About 22 kids is what we had beginning of the year. But I will tell you, with the COVID year, we had a lot of, the season stretched out this year, so we had a number of kids peter out. Whereas last couple of years, it had been, it had been stronger than that. But I know that we've had kids that have already applied to the Fort Thomas School District just because of wrestling. Multiple kids. I know that there are 34 states in the United States that have sanctioned women's wrestling already. The weight classes have already been put out. And I expect that in the next year, Kentucky's going to have women's wrestling. So Highland Tech school is going to be ahead of the game.
We're already ahead of the game. Seven girls this year, that's four ahead. One 15 this year. The girls are going to be fine. The middle school, it's all been good. And you guys have been great. There's no way you could have gotten that without the mats.
Oh, yeah. So, well, the, the, the wrestling club, the wrestling club purchased two sets of mats that Highlands High School uses as well as the, the, have purchased a set of mats. So there's three sets of mats. And what I really, really, really love to see is those mats be distributed maybe through like the middle school and some of the independent schools to get some of the youth kids involved. That's, that's what my heart will be, is to see that happen at that school. And I know that I'm not supposed to ask questions at this point in time, but I'm going to let you ask questions again. And then.
I just, I just want to commend you, Rob, for your fortitude and persistence when it comes to this program. I mean, you wouldn't take no for an answer. You were extremely persistent and I'm sure there's a lot of people involved in the program that took it to where it is. But without you, there's no program. So, you know, congratulations to you for your persistence and I personally would have, not have dreamed it would be as successful as it is. Just, I just didn't think it would be. And it, it greatly exceeded my expectations and it's a fantastic program. Obviously, you're doing a great job as well. So I want to see you guys wrestle here. We've got a couple wrestlers, so let's see what happens.
Thank you all very, very, very much.
Hang on. Hang on, we're not.
Well, I, I just wanted to say as well, I mean, it was mentioned during forensics, you know, getting kids involved that don't do other activities is so important. We see how much it plays in their education and getting them interested in the school. I know we all got a letter during the wrestling season from a parent that just talked about how this program has changed their kid's life. And it was, it was impressive. It was, it was impactful. I, I know when Rob came here, you know, Rob came to us a couple of years ago. I don't know, I'm a friend of Rob's. I don't know that I could have taken another phone call from him though. But he was persistent and Rob doesn't know it and I think he will tell you that there were so many people involved in getting this program. But he is one of the main reasons doing so for, so he doesn't know this, but I nominated him for a Tradition of Excellence Award and want to give that to him tonight for his.
Yes, and as the board member on the Title IX Committee, I really like the fact we're bringing in a sport that both young men and young women can be a part of. So that's super great and hopefully Kentucky will get on board with that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next person is Ashley Barlow. Come up.
Hey, Marley, will you tell Raymond to bring the kids in? Speaking of people that don't take notes very. Is everybody on the radio?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I think I pulled, you know, it's kind of like a church. I was telling, I was telling Raymond, I said, make them louder so that people will go faster, but they didn't go, they didn't go any faster. You know, teachers, do you want to come stand? And some of Jack's, Grandma and parents are here too. I just want to.
You can't start crying.
Dad, do you want to come stand with your kids?
Oh, I'm sure. Oh, who did that? Oh, you guys look so brave that they can just stand up.
Yes.
So we're here to celebrate Earl Downson Birthday without a kid that has Downsoner because he must need something else right now. He's in, I guess Jack's in the hallway.
He's here. He's back here.
But you want to come stand here? Be the star? Okay, you don't have to be. You mentioned star. So our son Jack is leading the fifth grade at Reed Moyer. And, you know, it's just been, we are here to celebrate the inclusive environment that we've had at Moyer, which has obviously been really emotional and wonderful to us. I'm, I'm an emotional person anyway, but this has really been great. So Moyer is a home to me. I always tease that I know that, I used to in the old building, know the pattern of the light switches in and out of the building because I would forget something and my mom was a teacher at Moyer and we'd run in or she'd forget something and or she'd be working late and we'd turn on and off the light switches in that scary old building. It's less scary now, but it was so, so dark. And Moyer was a home to us. And what has happened with having our boys at Moyer is it has really embodied the values of the home, right? So at your home, you have stability. And Moyer is familiar to us, it's stable to us, it's so close to our house that we can literally see it from our front door. Moyer, your home has your people and Moyer has our people. Many of these ladies here bought me baby shower presents when, when I was pregnant with Jack and Griffin and they kept the hot mess. Every single one of his Jena teachers is here tonight, as is his special education teacher and they have all done a wonderful job. They wrote you a letter with accolades for each of them, but Betsy Diamond, Cory Coradel, Becky Brady, Linda Hakme, Cam Brenner, Patty Brenner, one of his aides, Anne Argo and Melissa Sipples, the other aides, Jackie Holmes, the speech therapist, Amanda Jones, occupational therapy, Tim Bowles, special education, Dawn Labor, our principal. And it's not just those people, it's special area teachers, front office staff, cafeteria monitors, janitors, administrators, the people that give him his medicine, everybody that's been so inclusive to Jack and really made it a home. You can be yourself at home. And this is the thing that Moyer is so great about. Jack can be himself wherever he is. He did that at Senator McConnell's office actually also. Sat in his cell totally comfortable. But, you know, he, Jack likes to take stuff with him. And every single one of these teachers has been like, all right, bring it in. It's a PVC pipe, is it like a bungee cord today? What's coming in? And he just gets to be himself, he gets to do what he wants. And that's what each of these children behind me gets to do at their, in their environment too. And, you know, we always kind of tease like, there's this way of doing things and then there's Jack's way of doing things. And he gets to do that and Moyer indeed is included as he can be. And I think the thing, I've got a couple of other points, but the thing that is most important to me, I want to keep it short, is that at home, you're loved and you're loved not despite. is that at home, you're loved. And you're loved not despite your personal, well, many of us are loved despite our personalities at home. But that's a joke, right? Like, we aren't, we aren't loved despite our personalities. We are loved because of our personalities, because of our profiles, because of our oddities and our quirkinesses. And, and Jack is loved that way at Moyer. Every single teacher and kid and person at Moyer has found a way to celebrate Jack's successes. And I think that they celebrate them so significantly because these children are living through Jack's struggles as well. His academic struggles, his motor struggles, his social struggles. And that's really kind of the heart of inclusion, right? They are with him every minute of the day, with, with the exception of when he's getting a specially designed instruction, of course. But they're with him and they're seeing struggles in the cafeteria, struggles with noises, struggles with, you know, maybe it's articulation, but a lot of times it's like talking about his feelings. And they see that, and that helps them in their everyday life. And that comes to the kids, right? There's so many benefits to inclusion. I am a student of inclusion. And there's so many benefits to the Gen Ed population. It is, it cannot be disproven that at least it has a moderate or a stable impact on the Gen Ed students. But we like to say in the special ed world, there's no special ed room in the real world, in the adult world, right? Like, you don't just get to go to this room where everybody with disabilities goes to. And what that means is these kids behind me are going to be working in jobs and raising families and being in communities where people with disabilities live. And that makes, and, and being educated with the children that have disabilities in an inclusive environment really prepares them for that. So, you know, Jack's been in the talent show with them. He's, he did the kindergarten circus twice. That's why we did kindergarten twice. They create and have this group with him. I mean, I could talk about a million different stories of ways that they have found ways to be equitable and kind. And they've not only helped Jack grow, but they have grown themselves. So the quote that I found to kind of embody that spirit about making a home for Jack is that a school is much more than a place. A school is an embodiment of the values of those that occupy it. And that's from Linda Mullin at The Sparkle Effect. And I think those values that are so, so prevalent at Moyer are really what's made this awesome community. So thanks to you guys and happy World Cup. And Connor is our, is also with us, Ms. Meyer. So if we just want to.
Yes, I knew you were, you were asked to speak too. So please do.
My name is Connor. I've been from Jackson, Kennebunnell. We have been, we have done two Moyer, Moyer's Got Talent and, and one, and one, and one Kennebunnell circus. We've played Moyer, Moyer basketball together on the same team, played soccer at recess. It's fun. Jack is a good friend because he is funny, smart, and strong.
No, he's fine.
I enjoy playing at the swim club with Jack. We, we enjoy jumping off the diving boards. We had many fun times at the Much More's. I've enjoyed bringing him candy during the COVID lockdown. Jack makes me laugh a lot.
Do I have a little?
Going, going, going to Santa House and hanging out was fun. Most of all, Jack and I have our own little funny secrets that make us laugh.
Thank you, Ashley, for coming. And thank you, Jack. And thanks for bringing all your people.
Thank you for bringing us.
Uh huh. I know. You got, you, yeah, you got some, you got some. I know. You are one lucky guy.
Can you say thank you?
No. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for being here this evening.
That's perfect. I think I'm going, I'm coming too.
Hey, you want to speak?
Yeah, that's a tough act to follow.
Uh huh. That is, that is.
You might need to start trimming tissues up here. I'm just going to sit for a while here. My goodness. As you know, I'm here on behalf of the Fort Thomas Education Association. Our members represent some of the most active, fiercest advocates for students in our district. I think that's definitely evidence by the fact that you guys beat me too. Some of the recognitions that I have. A lot of folks that get recognized before I started talking are also association members. And I want to echo our membership's appreciation for some of our folks that have already been recognized. Brian McDowell and Stephanie Griffith, tremendous work on both of their behalf. We're very proud to call them fellow members. Just outstanding work. I'm so glad that that got to be showcased tonight in addition to what I was going to say. So I'm not going to take up too much more time. I do want to recognize from Woodfield, Woodfield, they selected their art teacher, Leah Fryman. Ms. Fryman put tremendous effort into Woodfield's school-like art show to provide our students an opportunity to showcase their published work. I coached volleyball in some of Woodfield quite a lot. And I got to see some of the artwork that they put together. And it's not just like, they're not just like, have a paint. And it is very clear that there is a planning process to what they're creating. There's a reflection piece in there where students are asked to talk about what they like the best, what they can improve, that kind of thing. So walking into volleyball practice, that's been a delightful thing to observe the hard work of our art teachers across the district, particularly Ms. Fryman. Just outstanding. Really wonderful to see. We move on to the high school next. The high school has selected Mrs. Elise Carter as our member to recognize this month. She is one of those teachers that refused to be stopped by COVID for any reason at all whatsoever. Last year, prom was iffy. We weren't sure if that was going to happen. And Ms. Carter pulled out all of the stops and put in a huge amount of time and effort to make what is arguably the most magical prom I think we've ever had at a high school. It was a sight to behold. I've never seen anything like it. It was definitely one for the high school history books, for sure. She continued that trend into this school year. She's maintained her work with Bluebird Cafe. And for those of you that don't know what Bluebird Cafe is, it is a phenomenal program that she has built with our special ed department to create real world, real life work experiences for students in our special ed program, as well as those in our business classes. And it is just a phenomenal and beautiful relationship. And it's really neat to see those kids all working together to build up this really beautiful cultural piece at the high school. And that's because of the work that Ms. Carter's put in. She didn't stop there. There's one more thing that COVID tried to stop too, the winter ball. Almost didn't happen. It was scheduled in February and things were crazy. And she didn't let it get canceled. They rescheduled and it was this past weekend. Did a nice pivot, did it in the gym, and just another really phenomenal and beautiful event. Because she's one of those teachers and one of our members that just refuses to quit and wasn't going to let COVID stop her. So those are our fabulous teachers that I wanted to recognize this month. Super proud of them. And I'll be like.
Thank you, Kelly. Okay, you ready? Okay. All right. Let's move on to the next part of our agenda. And first up is Johnson Elementary Replacement, and Jerry Wiseman.
Sorry, put the positive tone, Ben.
I know.
Don't ruin the mood, all right?
Don't.
This is titled Johnson Elementary Replacement Project because that's the way the Kentucky Department of Education would like us to approach this next piece of the puzzle, which is the construction of a parking lot where the temporary Johnson was located, as well as pick up stormwater down in that valley area, not just for our property, but also that comes down the hill from the neighboring property. And kind of collect that and properly filter that and get it into a storm sewer system. So Kevin Hanson with Cardinal Engineering has prepared the documents that are part of this that constructs a 48 spot parking area that will connect to the existing parking lot. So it will be accessed the same way coming down the hill, leaving, or back up the hill, but we'll add 48 spots for the drainage. So I don't know if anyone wants to see it. And we'll be there.
So Jerry, you're, you're asking for, for approval from the board to send to KDE?
And the bid documents to send them to the Kentucky Department of Education, which currently has oversight and approval on proceeding with such projects.
And upon this approval and KDE's approval, we could place them up for bid?
Get permission from them to bid the project.
What's, what's your timing thinking, what's your, what's your thinking on timing for, is there a concrete shortage?
Ideal world, if we could get this back by the end of the month from, well, the 21st, I don't think, by the end of the month of KDE. But I would like to have permission to bid and get a bid and come back to you with a contract for a prospective contractor at the Eagle meeting.
Okay.
That might be pushing it given the current rate of processing of documentation application. That's my goal.
Some of the recommendation to include it as part of the Johnson project was to expedite that process and, and at their recommendation.
Sure. And what, so let's say you come back in April or somewhere around that timeframe and, and we approve it. Are there delays in construction for something like this?
I don't know that there would necessarily be delays. You know, they do have to go in and on that particular picture, every little black dot you see is a, 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 a concrete footer that has to be removed. And then they kind of, kind of do a little bit of grading. It's very, very little grading that has to be done, but there is some work. Obviously, weather could impact that. Anytime you're working on wars or excavation, weather, you know, plays a problem. We hope that we have a below average rainfall in the spring. And we can, you know, be well ahead of the game and have this done, you know, at some point during the summer.
Every one of those concrete dots is a concrete footer? Every one of those dots is a concrete footer? I imagine they'll pull out relatively easily, yes?
With right equipment, yeah.
Yeah. So SD1 has signed off on this plan, more or less?
The document, Kevin Hanson sent me these on Friday for presentation to you tonight. And he was scheduled to meet sometime, I believe, today to see if there had to be any modifications. He did not anticipate any major modifications.
And how do we feel about ingress and egress? We still are only going to have the one single lane for both, correct? And we're going to have significantly more spaces. And it's still all spills out in the same general location, which is a mass of the Bermuda Triangle right there. Are we going to have significant issues logistically, do you feel, with having that only single lane ingress egress?
You know, it's something we asked them to look at when studying it. And in order to incorporate, to put another wet path down and, you know, kind of have one way traffic down and out, you were still coming to that pinch point up there by that triangle. They did not see where you could necessarily put another entrance in because it would be almost right on top of what we refer to as the unknown champions.
I guess I'm looking long term at the possibility. The best way, obviously, is an in and an out, kind of like we do at Moyer. And when we have that property now, I just, I'm thinking, not, obviously not right now, but down the road, is there anything we should be doing with this project if we do want to consider the possibility of putting something in in the future that would allow us to have individual ingress egress?
And within the, that's the way to phrase it, the current confines of the property we own, this is still their recommended approach. If at some point we were to acquire more property or property in a different location where people could come in in a different spot and make their way down, but they would address that at that time.
Okay. Is there anything significant that we would be doing relative to SD1's demands for drainage that might be altered if we were going to consider this in the future? I guess what I'm driving here is I don't want to be spending a whole bunch of money down the road to remove a bunch of drainage lines or things like that.
What they're doing is they're, they're trying to collect all that water kind of right at the base.
Okay.
And then take it through, through the storm sewer system to a water quality unit. And then through the water, the water, it's not shown on this slide, but I don't know the water detention areas increase. And the only opportunity for disruption of that is if we were to acquire property and create an entrance to that area coming off of bluegrass.
Off of bluegrass. Okay. Yeah, that wouldn't happen. Okay. Here's, I don't think so. Okay, that's good. Yeah, thanks.
Any other questions?
Well, I think the only other thing is in case somebody asks a question about, do we, you know, we do need more parking at the high school, but I think long term, I think that's probably not our only option. You know, it's, it's probably the short term solution because we don't want the muddy field with the concrete footers. But in the long term, there's, you know, there's probably not going to be a parking lot forever. So it is a short term solution, I think.
Okay. All right. I need a motion for the approval of the parking lot and stormwater quality control design and bid package for the Johnson Elementary Replacement Project. Do I have a?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Thanks, Jerry. You're doing, you're doing the next part two.
The next two.
Okay.
I can't remember which one is next.
The security, school security funds?
Okay. As you're all aware, legislation several years ago allocated money based upon formula to school districts that can use for certain purposes. We had elected to use our amount of money, which is $87,333, to partially fund the current project we have underway that upgrades the access control in all schools. It's something that we put a new system in Johnson Elementary, and then we use this money to help expand it into the other schools so that we're on a common system that was a significantly more secure system, as well as a system that is, in my opinion, significantly easier to operate and manage. You know, so the $87,333 doesn't pay for the entire project, but it utilizes that fund. In order to request that reimbursement, we need the board to approve the request for reimbursement for that full amount.
Okay. Okay. I need a motion for the approval of school security funds reimbursement in the amount of $87,333. So moved?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. And then she gets that. The next is the RFP for?
The next is the annual RFP for custodial supplies. It is a certain number of them. It is not, you know, the entirety of everything we purchase, but it's most of the things that we purchase for custodial supplies. We go, we go through this process to effectively create a ceiling on what we will pay for these supplies. If we find them in any place at a lower cost than that throughout the year, we are free to purchase them at that lower cost. I did reach out to our vendors because in our RFPs every year, it gives us the right to come to a mutual agreement to hold that pricing for an additional year. We have done that some in the past with selective items, but none, we could not reach agreement with any of the vendors currently. The whole pricing on anything simply because, as one individual put it, currently on about 10 items that they are selling to us, they are losing money because it costs them more to buy from the manufacturer than they are contractually obligated to sell to us. So they're making zero profit on. So they're making zero profit on certain items. So I do expect costs to go up, but I also expect that Kathy Eaton will spend as much time, if not more than Amy Horne's did, continually researching and trying to work with our vendors that if we find the same or similar product elsewhere for less, that we would go ahead and purchase that at that time.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. All right, I need a motion for the approval of the RFP for custodial supplies. Does it move? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thanks, Jerry. Okay, the next section is school-wide fundraiser, so you've got a couple of things coming here.
The first one is school-wide fundraisers. And as you recognize, always in July, we share our school events that are occurring within our buildings. And we are going to be adding one for Highlands Middle School. It is called Help Move Minds and is built upon and shared that through the rest of the month of March, they are going to be focusing on physical activity to promote that within their personal lives while at school. And through that, there is an opportunity for donations, which then are forwarded to their health and PE equipment and their classes as a result of this. So since there is a donation part of it, we need to then encourage a, an approval for the board to recognize the student's school-wide fundraiser.
Okay.
Is this related to the Plaza of Jumping Jacks I saw on video today?
Sure is. There's something every day she has shared throughout the rest of the month.
That was a lot of kids doing jumping jacks.
Yeah.
Good. I didn't join it.
Marvin swats, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Burpees. Burpees. Burpees are fun.
Okay, I need a motion to request to add a new school-wide fundraiser at the Highlands Middle School for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
So moved.
Second? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Still Jamie?
Okay. I have just a couple of slides to share. As we discussed the calendar update, in brief, we're going to be discussing our preschool program. Originally this was brought, we left this out as we were still working on placement for our preschool program. And so for this current school year, preschool right now is at Johnson Elementary. Because of enrollment in certain grade levels and facility needs, we are needing to relocate our preschool program to Moier Elementary for next year. And with that, we need to consider our start times, our programming. So it will still be a Monday through Thursday program. And then I can tell you specifically, and this will be written, I'm sure, in the way I think he has it worded for our motion, but it's three hours, four days a week. And it will be from eight until eleven in the morning and then eleven forty-five to two forty-five. So it's a buffer in the beginning of the day and then the afternoon. The start date will be August twenty-ninth and the ending will be May twenty-fifth. And you will note that that's different than our instructional calendar for all other grades as we have our home visits, our screenings at the beginning and then also at the end. So that's an adjusted calendar just for preschool. So beyond that too, what we wanted to bring to the table, a consideration for not changing our calendar, but re-coding the way our twenty-two, twenty-three calendar for makeup days are. If you recognize, just most recently, we had a makeup day in March. That was a red day, so it was an off day, and that did bring confusion to our community and to our teachers. So we are proposing just to mark those in our new calendar to have as a placeholder. And if we do not have implement letter, there will be no school. If we are beyond it, obviously those two days will test. And if implement letter comes after March the tenth, then we'll have to consider at the end of the school year, adding those days on. But we wanted to clearly communicate with everyone that that could be a possibility. So, and this way, it's really hard to see because it's a lighter gray color. But if you look at the left, that is the calendar that you have approved in January. And you can recognize that in February, that Friday is red on the left. On the right, it's a light gray. So it's changing that still to an off day, but giving us an option for a makeup day there. And then the following month in March, you'll see that March the tenth is red in one. It's going to be a makeup day in the second. And then at the end, you'll see in June, our previously approved calendar has two makeup days at the end. Now in June, the proposal would be that there wouldn't be any if we can make them up earlier if we have them.
So if snow is later, then they'll be made up at the end of the year?
Correct. So if we would have a strange weather event, like today or tomorrow in this month, considering that we've not had the opportunity to make up on that March tenth date, we'd have to then go into the June calendar, change the end, move the closing date back and add there-
Okay.
To keep a one seventy-seven.
So essentially, like, everyone will know what the possible makeup days are, as you said, to kind of address if there was confusion or people were not pleased with the changes since they were initially read for this year's calendar?
Correct. We did have to field some phone calls from parents to communicate with them about the displeasure that they had because they had already planned a trip on that four-day weekend. And so they had already made the plans. There were no changes for them and they were worried about what the implications would be for their child for not being at school. So it isn't as if we can promise it'll be a day off. It could be a possibility that we are going to be in. And so we're letting them know you're ahead of time and they still want to plan those stress.
You don't really think they're going to stop planning the trips?
Oh, no. But I want to make sure that we can sweeten those as makeup days if-
So they're flex days now?
Correct. If we could make that happen.
Got it. Makes sense.
Anybody else? Okay. I need a motion for the approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three preschool calendar and the designation of the first two makeup days to be February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three and March tenth, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, Jamie.
Thanks, Jamie.
Okay, the next section is about the RFP for publishing services. So Brian?
So very similar to Jerry's presentation, there are some projected increases to our regular contracts for publishing services. Specifically, there are two published items that we contract annually. One is the Traditions magazines. We have two editions, one in the winter, one in the spring. And then we also have contracted for our district-wide calendar. We did reach out to publishers to see if they would be holding prices this year. They are not indicating that that's the case. And so this is an RFP to request for additional bids, which will go out as soon as this, assuming approval, and would be due through the fourteenth of April. So we bring those back for publishing in April or for approval in April.
Okay. I'm not opening these. Do we, do we do RFPs each year or is it for a three-year?
We have an option for, I think it's three years, to continue if both parties will hold the prices. We do an RFP if we anticipate that they'll increase it.
Well, they told us that just with everything, that there's no way they can keep the prices the same. So that's why we have to do it again to ensure. Otherwise, what we have done is done the RFP, but we had the option to continue it for up to two more years. They have the price here to say that's, they just can't do additional one.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. I need a motion for the approval of the RFP for publishing services for the Traditions Magazine and the annual school calendar. Does it move? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. You're still up, Brian?
Yep.
Okay.
So the last action item we have on the agenda is related to our launch lease. As you know, or as you've heard from some of, some of our discussions, we have some increasing prices. We are, we are planning our budgets accordingly. You may recall, back in January, Andy and I presented the draft budget for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, fiscal year twenty-three. And in that budget, we projected what we hoped would be the, a worst-case scenario with some unknown factors. We didn't know what the legislature would decide, for example. We didn't know what, what would occur with, with our every four-year revaluation, reassessment of property taxes. In that budget, we planned for a fifteen percent increase in total property value in Fort Thomas. We planned it fifteen percent because frankly, we hadn't seen fifteen percent in the last thirty years. I think the last large increase, the largest increase we had seen in the two thousands was, was about fourteen percent. So we projected at, at a fifteen percent dollar figure. That was about a loss of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, just based on the way that the SEEK formula works. So a lot of people in here are familiar with how our SEEK formula works. When local property values go up, there is a local contribution that goes towards the SEEK base. And it's fairly, you know, it's sometimes difficult to explain, but the moral of the story is that a fifteen percent property increase in four one oh seven five, again, we were projecting about a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar loss. We received some preliminary numbers from, from the PVA. And those preliminary numbers actually were twenty-six percent property increase in the Fort Thomas School District boundaries. That loss, and that's the high end, okay? So I want to go ahead and say that that initial projection is the worst-case scenario because they're still subject to, to local property owners contesting the high property values and having that go down. So that, that process has not occurred. At the high end, though, our actual loss from, from SEEK revenues could be, as you can see in the yellow, one point, one, almost one point two million dollars in loss. Andy and I, in our conversations, we really project more like nine hundred thousand to one million dollar loss when we look at SEEK dollars and the local contribution, again, as a result of an increase in our local property value. Another way to project it, when we look at, at our, we're continuously revising our budgetary processes, after an assumed increase in the SEEK base, which we expect the legislators will, will provide about a hundred dollar, is the best intel we're getting, has been passed, a hundred dollar increase in the SEEK base. And with our typical increase in, in local revenues, we're projecting that our revenue in fiscal year twenty-three will actually be less than our revenue in, in this current year, in fiscal year twenty-two. So with that, I would not say that we are in a, in a desperate situation. We're not as a district, you know, calling for, for mass cuts and things along those lines. At the same time, we have to identify some, some efficiencies. We have to look at opportunities to be more efficient with, with cost. It's compounded by inflationary costs and operational costs and materials and supplies and energy and so on. And we also have to plan for what our future experiences and opportunities for our students look like. That brings us to our agenda item. It's really this space. This space at, at launch at twenty grand has been of benefit to our district. We do our board meetings here. It's enhanced student programming. We have a significant number of professional meetings here as well. We have been exceptionally appreciative of the creative partnership from Mr. Gorman, who's been fantastic in the planning and, and the collaboration with our teams. At the same time, we're at a place where it has to be an area that we look for, for an efficiency. And so this is compounded by, we're in March and as we look at the budget, as we look at the realities of what's coming, if we were to discontinue the lease in this space, notification has to be provided ninety days prior to the termination of, of the current term, which is June thirtieth, which is why we're discussing this here even before some of the legislatures have finished. And so I'm here tonight to recommend to the board that you give me the authority to make notification to, to our landlord of our intent not to extend our lease into the next school year. I have been in touch with Mr. Gorman. He and I have gone back and forth a couple of times over the last week. And out of respect for the partnership, out of respect for, for the creative solutioning, we talked about having an opportunity to also address the board and speak to the board. And so with your permission, I'd like to give him that opportunity to-
Totally fine.
Thanks. So I want to say thanks, first of all, to Brian for the heads up. I mean, I know you guys have been talking about this, about me here, your heads up or anything.
Hey Dad, raise your mic up there.
So I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so first of all, I also want to, they talked about Louise Carter for a little bit, and I think that she is amazing. And, you know, my son has taken a lot of classes with her, both at launch and at school. And, you know, he developed a real passion for business and went for the Business Honors Program at UC. He was awarded that. Now, Business Honors Program at UC has changed a lot. It used to be a lot better than it is, but, you know, coming up, there's only going to be sixty kids in it. And so, and over ten percent of the kids that were invited to that nationwide program are from the Highlands.
Wow, that's really cool.
That's awesome.
That is awesome.
So I've been in the district for about twenty years. Again, thanks for the, for the opportunity. You've been the site-based council, someone foundation. And the one thing I always wondered about, about the school system is when you have such a high bar, how do you continue to push it higher? You know, because it's like, almost, you know, you get to a point where it's just hard to figure out stuff to do, you know? So, you know, we were, after I acquired the facility a few days ago, you know, Debbie Buckley sent me a tech company that wanted to occupy the space that launches it right now. So we were negotiating a lease and, and during that time, you know, I was sitting in a bunch of meetings about Fort Worth graduate, you guys were all traveling all over the country to live at different schools. And I kept hearing you. We kept talking about trying to grab a work you do and things like that you in Minnetoka. And, and so kind of before I committed to those folks, I called some of you guys and I said, you know, I can probably help that happen for you because it'd be a cost savings compared to if you had to do it yourself. And make it happen a lot faster. And so we kind of, we started down that path, kind of exploring that, put those folks on hold. It ended up being a very expensive thing to accomplish. And so, you know, we started negotiating a lease. And I said, I gotta have five years if we're gonna, if I'm gonna make this kind of financial commitment. It's hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, to, to kind of customize the space the way you guys wanted. And, you know, I did find out that you guys can only sign one year lease. And so, but as you'll see on the letter of intent that, that was signed, you know, there was this kind of handshake that you'd be here for at least five years. So now, I just want to say that you guys have very, very challenged, this, this budget thing is real. I'm not saying it's not real. You've had a tough couple of years especially, and so thank you for, for that. I serve on the planning commission, so I know that it's not always fun to be in front of the public these days. You know, things can be very inflammatory in lots of different directions. And so I'm not saying that to keep the lease for launch, that I wouldn't want any teachers to not get renewed, that there were other programs that would be cut. I understand why one year leases have to be signed. Administrations change, priorities change, boards change and all of that stuff. But what I am saying is that there's a ton of excitement and time and effort that went into launch. Lots of construction effort and, you know, customization, lots of like really awesome technology and furniture and things like that. And so we're at a point where this is here, like this isn't something that has to be created in the emergency. And so, so what I am just wondering, and what I'm not saying is that tough cuts somewhere else. What I am saying is that this is a pretty cool partnership. And, you know, the vision of what this was supposed to look like in Minnetoka was like tons of different community partners coming in here and teaching kids, lots of different sponsors for the space, you know, civic, or corporate sponsors and things like that. And so what I'm just asking you guys to consider is instead of just pulling the plug on it and vacating, I know that there's plenty of people that want to see it survive. And I feel like there's a way, I mean, anytime, this is Fort Thomas. I mean, like, we're gonna- I mean, like, we're going to go, you know, back to meeting the gymnasiums for our board meetings, and we're just going to pull the plug on something because of this, of what's happening right now, and just, instead of, like, exploring for different reasons to get paid for, corporate sponsorships, I mean, there's already medical stuff going on up there, and seniors could use it and share it, you know? I just feel like there's partnerships with, you know, UC has come in to speak to Investment Club multiple times and stuff like that. And so I just feel like there's opportunities that won't come into your budget where you can still keep that alive. So I'm just asking, would you consider that? Thanks for that, Jamie.
Thank you.
I do think it's important, as Dan talked, to continuously find new and innovative and unique ways to push our kids. It's part of our strategic planning process. It's what we are, who we're supposed to be in. So there's no intent of looking for regressing in terms of what our students have available. In some ways, really identifying these efficiencies is how we're going to be able to do it in a budgetary year that's really tough, long-term. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Well, I think the only, there's a few things I'd like to say. First, I appreciate all of Dan's efforts, and there's no question that he, you know, took one for the team in helping us get started here, and put a lot of his own money into it, and fabricated the place conducive to what our needs were and our wants were at the time. It didn't go as exactly as planned for a lot of reasons. Obviously, COVID got involved in that. And relative to those types of relationships that you're speaking of, I was thinking along the same lines, and that we would get it paid for by those companies, et cetera, sponsors. But that didn't come to fruition for a lot of different reasons. One, I think, is manpower. We didn't, we don't really have the manpower to go out and solicit those types of businesses. And then there's obviously a skill set involved in doing that as well. In many ways, I thought they would come to us, because I see a tremendous value add for those companies to come to us. Kids today have a lot more to offer companies these days than they used to, relative to technology and other advancements and things that it takes me hours to do that they can do in minutes. But that didn't happen. The reality is, it didn't happen. And additional reality of that is that this is really scary. These numbers are scary. The values aren't going to go down. I mean, yeah, they might be a correction after all the appeals and what have you get completed, but, you know, they're not going to go down. Values never go down historically. They only go up. And there's been a tremendous rise in real estate values, and the fact is, they're connected to how we get our funding. And losing that kind of money, realizing that we're going to take less money this year, or get less money this year than we got last year, and considering inflation and where we are, is very, very scary. And we have to make some cuts, and we have to do them now, and we have to be proactive and not reactive. As unfortunate as it is, this is a low hanging fruit for us, and that's where we're at. So unfortunately, it kind of is what it is.
Yeah, and I would agree. I was involved in these discussions when we, and I, when we got this place, and I don't know that we ever realized the potential of it in the four years that we've been here, which is unfortunate, but it's, you know, I think for what we're, I think in the long term, we see plans that we could do things that we originally envisioned here, but we can do some of that in actually the building. So I think the activities that are taking place in this building today, we can, we have room for in our current buildings, now that Johnson's complete and everything else. And it's unfortunate. I, you know, even if we had signed a five-year agreement at that time, I don't think I would even say today that we would commit beyond next year, because I just don't think that we're realizing the, we don't need the space at this point. It's unfortunate. You know, I know that when we talked about it, there was lots of conversations about what this place could be, and I don't know that there's any fault in that. It's just that, you know, we just haven't got there yet. You know, do we need things that we talked about in this space? The extra, you know, career-type programs? Yes. But we've not, we've not done that yet. And, yeah, the budget stuff, as Brad said, is real. I mean, I've had multiple conversations over the last several months. You know, we had budget committee meeting, which I was going to talk about in the board updates, but, you know, it's not pretty. I mean, those numbers are real. I mean, our budget is going to be going down. You know, when you're a district like ours that don't, does not get a lot of state support, you know, we did not get S.R. funds like everybody else. We got enough to survive for the time that we were open during COVID, and, you know, now we're sort of back to square one. And, you know, as Brad said, there's not a lot of options, and this needs to be one. So I would just apologize, because I know that our intent was to be here five years. I don't think we can do it and not damage the schools, and so that's why I think we need to step away a little bit early. But I, you know, as a business partner, I know you put a lot of work into this place, and I know that you did it for the schools, and I appreciate it. I would just apologize that we're going to do this a year earlier than we had hoped. Actually, you know, I don't think we would hope to do even a year earlier. I think we hope to stay, but I don't think it's going to work out. And I don't want to put the, I don't want to put the schools at risk. You know, we're cutting in other spots, too. This seems to be one that we can do and probably need to do.
And there were viable programs. You talked about a lease. A lease is still going to be in our building, and we'll be able to do those programs in our building and continue doing those. So that is not going to take a backseat. We'll keep, you know, changing and adapting and improving and doing more and more state-of-the-art programs that we can do in our building at this point.
And so I request your approval to be able to provide the notification to meet our timelines.
Okay. All right. So I need a motion for the approval to allow the superintendent to notify the landlord of the intention to not renew the lease, which expires on June 30th, 2022, for the property located at 20 North Grand Avenue, Fort Thomas, Kentucky.
I will make motion.
Second? So I was second.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. Thank you. Okay. The next section is Board Committee Updates. So does anybody have an update for a committee?
I would just, you know, continuation on the budget discussion. You know, I'm glad we started meeting out happy, because, yeah, I mean, the budget is what it is. And though the state seems to be flush with cash, you know, and SEEK might be increased a little bit because of the property values, it's not going to help us. So in fact, we're going to get hurt. You know, we are doing things to do the right thing and watch what our expenses are. You know, I think the one thing the public, you know, doesn't understand, because it's difficult, I mean, I've been on here for a long time, and the formula doesn't make any sense. So we're going to try to continue to talk about it on a regular basis, just so you know that, you know, property value, you know, your property value might be jumping 20-plus percent, but we're not, we're not getting the 26% in the schools. It's not going to happen. Our numbers are going to go down this year. So it's something to know. We're not, we're not getting that money. The state might have a lot of money, but they're not giving it to us. So something that we're going to have to continue to watch and be careful with your budget and be responsible for your funds, and that's what we're trying to do.
Okay. Anybody else? We, the breakfast committee keeps on giving. So at the beginning of the year, the breakfast committee had donations from people in the community and businesses in the community, and we had some money left after breakfast the first day. So we've been taking food to late arrivals, I know. So we have some more laugh for teacher appreciation, so some things will come that first week of May, but I think they've liked it, so it's been kind of fun. We keep taking food.
We can do that.
Okay, good, good. So it's been fun. It's, and I want to thank all those people that donated to us, because it's definitely the gift that keeps on giving, so it's been kind of a fun thing to do. So, okay, the next thing, anybody else? Okay, the next thing is the approval of the consent agenda. With, you've all had time to look at that. So with the all-board members, oh, shoot, sorry. Those weird things are one. Okay. With all-board members having had the opportunity to review and pursue any questions about all of the items contained therein, approval of the consent agenda. So I need a motion for that.
Does that move?
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All those opposed? Okay. And then the last thing, or any discussion items that you have, Brian?
No, again, you know, we have a lot of planning this spring. We'll have a salary committee. We've had some facility discussions that we'll continue to have. I want to emphasize to our, to our teachers and staff that we have found some efficiencies. We found them in, as we've looked at, at some of the staffing formulas, and this board has prioritized making sure that we keep up with teacher raises and keep up with maintaining our staff at our school. So I want to make sure that they know this is, it's a tight situation, but it's not a desperate one, and that we're prioritizing the things that impact our kids the most.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. So with that, this meeting is adjourned.